July 25th, we are having our college hearings agenda items on college meeting to order. Please stand with me as we say our prayer and pledge. Father God, thank you for bringing us here safely so that we can work together and try to do great things for our island and for our employees and for all of our constituents. Please allow us to leave the things that help you brought us here. And please, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Commissioner Allen Lachlan. He is your faithful servant. He ran the race and getting out home with you. Please keep us all in your good care until we can all be united here today.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the children of this world. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well called. Bringing information now. We will sign with the bringing of information now. No one shall deceive the innocent people of the department, always see you, any person who tries to go to the paper. Commissioner Brown Crowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Grant? Commissioner Milken? Commissioner Holston?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Are there any oral or written petitions to sign on that? All right, I have number four ordinance number 2022 dash zero four sale of property on 6.52 acres located on Gillis Bluff Road, property of James Island Home Service District, second and final reading as the ordinance number, that we are selling that land. So I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2022 dash 04.
So we're going to open it up to the public hearing? So the commission is going to take a motion to open it up to the public here.
I make that motion.
All right, and you're having a public hearing. If anybody has anything to say, please come forward about these ordinance 2022, 2022 oh four. All right.
Then we have a little public vote.
Come out of?
Come out of the public hearing. I make a motion to close the public hearing. Starting. And now we're going to roll into the six thirty regular information meeting, done our opening exercises, and we had a moment of silence for Commissioner. Number seven, let's see if we have two days before the employees see you, any person who tries to go to the paper. Well called. Commissioner Brown Crowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Grant? Commissioner Milken here. Commissioner Holston?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
And now, this is something that's really special. I'm honored because of a proclamation honoring and recognizing Frank Porco for his many, many years of service with us. Thank you for being a faithful servant of our new government service district and taking good care of us here. I'm going to read this out loud if that's okay. The honor and recognize solid wait service vehicle operator Frank Bonzentreria?
Bonzentreria.
Porco, Porco has served for the James Island Public Service District. Whereas Frank P. Porco began his career as a laborer with the James Island Public Service District, selling weight services in Harbin on January 31st, 1986, and retired on July 1st, 2021. And whereas Frank was promoted to driver of solid wait service on February 6th, 1989. And whereas Frank was promoted and transferred to wastewater services as truck operator, July 23rd, 2001. And whereas Frank was promoted to wastewater services surveying technician, July 16th, 2007. And whereas Frank P. Porco was instrumental in assisting with the successful provision of service after Hurricane Nudo, as well as several less severe germs during his employment and tenure with the district. Whereas the James Island Public Service District proudly acknowledge the hard work and dedication of the employees. Frank P. Porco has applied the knowledge, training, and courage for the betterment of our citizens and the service of our communities. Now therefore, I, Commissioner Chair Corbett, on behalf of the James Island Public Service District Commission, will hereby extend a heartfelt thank you for Frank P. Porco for his 35 years of loyal service to the James Island Public Service District. All right, oral and written petitions. Does anyone want to sign? Can sign if you have the regular information meeting, 2027, 2022. I make a motion to close the minute, and any discussion or correction. Commissioner Holston? Commissioner Brown Crowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Milken?
Yes.
Commissioner Holston?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Okay, number six, ordinance number 2022 dash 04, sale of property on 6.52 acres located on Gillis Bluff Road, James Island South Carolina, second reading and final reading. I make the motion to approve ordinance number 2022 dash 04 for the sale of property on 6.52 acres of land located on Gillis Bluff Road. Okay, any discussion? Well called. Commissioner Brown Crowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Milken?
Yes.
Commissioner Holston?
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Number seven, resolution ever sought for one? Right. Resolution adopting cross-regional hazard mitigation plan. Don Ingleman, Debbie Fire, who were refrigerated in their DRSV vehicles.
As required by the PMA, as a plan to adopt it, I give you the following factors. Like, you are actually about to be, uh, be, uh, a lot of, you remember back in 2008, you had to do the celebration of the adopted change that you're, uh, now we are part of the, uh, the, uh, possible.
So I make the motion for the red motion. And discussion please. I think our project, we got a lot of, you got knowledge, you got, you got model on it.
Right, the, uh, the woman who's signing, did not have ground.
Well called. Commissioner Brown Crowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Milken?
Yes.
Commissioner Holston?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Number eight, constable number 13, where rehabilitation is likely in Hoffman, director of wastewater district.
Not going to have a team or two or something in the optimal operating condition, uh, murder, wanting to rehabilitate something, 13. It's a mechanic road, it's in East Point, uh, the school over there, uh, the cause of, uh, uh, child, uh, death, uh, and he's always injured, uh, he's had here, he's kind of through security, uh, we're planning to refire the whole thing, really, uh, finding, we work well, and the higher you start fighting, the easier it is, and, uh, this is for the, uh,
Okay. Thank you. Oh, I think you got it.
Along with this, please fire the just one of those again.
Well, we're still there, it's 20 maybe.
No, I don't think so.
No, I can't work the new, I, the new fire, they're the same one too, so they're not that other, and they can light up, put it in, so, uh, the, uh, that's, uh,
everything.
I think I'm often, if we're doing this, we'll try to fix this there.
Yeah, so we can, okay.
Okay, that would be great.
You know, they're, you know, they're standard, you definitely, you know, it's very, uh, there's a price to, 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 uh, to, uh, to, uh, thank you.
Okay, I make a motion that we, um, the board of rehab projects, and make the second, so no call votes, is the public voting, is it? Commissioner Brown Crowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Milken?
Yes.
Commissioner Holston?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
The Gillis, the Gillis district manager report, David Chambers.
All right, tomorrow, the 46th of July, and, uh, Police Order Director Hoffman and, uh, Joanne, myself, and Bob George will all attending. It's the RIA Regional Workshop, Dorchester County County Chambers at 10:00 AM, and we have a breakout session scheduled for New, Jack and Matt, who is going to be, uh, helping oversee and administer the public Skip program. The RIA is the S C I I P program, the Skip program, and that is how they're going to administer the ARCA funds to the local government. So, uh, the commission will expect to have much more information, um, about our plan for Skip at the regular meeting next month, the 22nd of August. The week before that is, uh, Monday, August 15th, 2022, at 6:30 PM, here at town hall, which will be only what means to me the meeting, that would be the kickoff session, Strategic Planning facilitated by Bill Fordstrom, who is pleased and made invited. So by time invited, J I T S D, Strategic Partners from the city of Charleston, Austin County, Town of James Island, the city of Bobby Beach, um, so, and, and all of the individuals that have registered, the ones for the J I T S D commissioner. So basically, we have many stakeholders, uh, and, uh, we've invited them to that meeting on the 15th of August. Bill Fordstrom requested to meet with the commissioners on Tuesday to 16th of August. So Gavin signed up for a session with Mr. Fordstrom on that Tuesday. Please let me know, we got four sessions, and we're trying to break it out into 7:30 AM, 9:00, 11:00, 1:00. Uh, please let me know which one is going to be best for you, and if none of those times work on that date, uh, we'll try to schedule something, uh, as a virtual session to get it lined up. So last month, there was a resolution that was passed for the multi-jurisdictional newer expansion project, and I wanted to let members of the commission know that the district obtained the approval from the USDA to move forward as expected. The city of Charleston and C W F, E W S have both been notified that we obtained that approval, we can move forward as expected. Uh, right now, uh, please keep the date of Thursday, the 6th of October, 2022, um, that is potentially the date for the community event, and the load parking lot. Uh, we haven't been able to do that since I've been here, so I would see the helicopter land at the Google. Um, the, again, Thursday, the 6th of October is the tentative date for that. Um, and later on in October, the S C S P D, the educational conference is scheduled for Wednesday, the 19th of October, through Friday, the 21st of October in rural heat. I sent an email out to the commissioners this afternoon. The deadline registered is the 15th of September, please let Cameron and I know as soon as possible. If you plan to attend, so we can pay the registration fees and the hotels, uh, hotel rooms well in advance, and just let me know if you have any questions about that. So, uh, I, I was hoping everybody, I want to keep it high level on the financials. Uh, if you look at this roll-up page, I'm going to be, uh, kind of going over some figures. So this monthly financial package was recorded through June of 2022, or 12 runs through fiscal year 22, so that's the target, it should be 100%. And, uh, um, members of the commission should know that these figures have not been audited, so they're not finalized. The audit team coming on site in the fall, and then the plan is to present the financials to the commission on Monday, the 12th of December, 2022. So that's when the figure will be finalized. However, fiscal year 22 is trending very positive for the district, with financial results in both the general fund and the wastewater fund. So high level, the district collected just under $10.7 million in, uh, the general fund revenue for fiscal year 22, and that's that $10,698,572. That's just over $450,000 more than projected for general fund revenue. Some of the components that factored into the higher than expected general fund revenue were one-time revenue windfall, like the sale of old fire station number one, the half acre of Fawley Road, and the sale of the 2008 American Le France Eagle Humber. And for last year, for example, in the same general line, 0100041 dot 00, was the proceed from the sale of the asset. That was only 72,000 last year, and this year that was 1,327,000. So that's a very large difference for that one-time revenue windfall compared to previous fiscal year. Another intriguing factor for the higher than expected, uh, revenue in the general fund, um, is 01000465 dot 04, proceed, FEMA recovery from Hurricane Dory. So the district took 44,167,000 in this line in November of 2021, from a storm that happened in September of 2019. Last year, that same line item was 317,829,000 in fiscal year 21, because that's when the district was provided the most, um, reimbursement from FEMA for Dory. So some of those numbers that vary greatly from last year to this year, that's what I'm kind of talking about here. So members of the commission will also see on that roll-up page that the nearly 10.7 million total general fund revenue exceed the $8,575,306 in general fund expenditures. So it's a very good thing when you see total revenue exceed total expenditures for the general fund. You can also see that the actual expenditures for the general fund of $8,700, or $8,575,306 are well below the appropriation for fiscal year 22 of $8,703,692. Meaning it's shaping up that the actual expenditures will become, will come in below the budget, below the appropriation of these deposit things for the general fund. If you drill down, you can see one of those cost centers, the general fund, you'll also notice that the actual expenditures for the cost center come in slightly less than the fiscal year 22 appropriations are under budget. However, the differences between budget versus actual are fairly close, meaning the district budgeted projections are fairly on par for fiscal year 22. The excess of the general fund revenue exceeding the general fund expenditures for fiscal year 22 will increase the district's general fund balance, adding to the reserves for the district to invest back in the capital project for the general fund. So much more on this to come during the district's upcoming strategic planning process next month. You will notice a very similar positive trend for the wastewater fund. Some of the wastewater fund revenue came in $454,040 higher than expected for fiscal year 22. Members of the commission will also see that fiscal year 22 wastewater expenditures of $7,52,430 are much lower than the budgeted of $9,482,340 due to several factors. The most significant factor is that depreciation has not yet been applied for fiscal year 22. Um, and, and we previously discussed in, in previous meetings, the S F S rehab project was delayed due to supply chain issue, getting a resin to make the necessary improvements. So we will keep the commission apprised if there needs to be a fiscal year 23 budget adjustment, and more progress to be made on the rehab project. So overall, I'm very proud of the district's financial performance for fiscal year 22, and we'll hope to keep that positive momentum trend, uh, going for fiscal year 23 as well. That's what happens.
My, uh, um, I'm happy to share that, um, you need, uh, um, still be there, we're there as well, on the way. Well, uh, we probably have done it without the help of the staff. So, um, just, we, if you want to show there, I hope that we got two in a time, so, or one in a day, whatever. But I think that, um, because the staff has really, we could have done it without them, so I would like to acknowledge, we go work hard, we go through this work, then, keep on pushing on. Give them company, this is just a hot dog. So we thought, um, wastewater, you know, it's had 2.4 million, that's left, I mean, there's, there's 2.4 million that you can, in our pocket, do, you think that's even?
Well, uh, you also have depreciation there, because depreciation, as we can, is, uh, right, so depreciation, we budgeted 1.6 million, and we booked 267,000 of that, so, uh, out of that different, 1,337,500 to 2,230 together.
Some of the, we see, and we wear the wastewater project, they, uh, or, like, the wastewater meeting, or, uh, obviously.
So that's what we're going, we're going to talk to, or, RIA?
Yeah.
Uh, tomorrow about the ARCA project, associated with, how we're going to afford to do the project. It's a very big project as far as, um, how to be able to prioritize, what we think we're going to be funded, what the M A T is going to be for that, and to be able to work your code on this. Municipal advisor, bar council, as far as meeting the M A T requirements, and how we can prioritize private support.
And I have a question on, um, foster and secondary, we lost another four, they're going to talk to them, is that on?
That would have been for him.
Okay. And so, who's gone, who's been there, right, uh, are you, is that something we're going to follow up on, or, um, are there, that's something, are there people going to be hired? Are they going to be left out there, and you can get some, are you sure for you, that's needing without, um, staffing and personnel, you have, you have 25 people, it wasn't finished with ours and yours. For God's sake, for you.
No, I, I have a question, I have the back.
Yeah, I think, right, I'm scared, if you get, you kind of, you support the beginning here about personnel, that you need to get, when I work for them, and there's all different, A C C, and, 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 about, you, 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 yeah. So that was, you know, you have to watch, you have to watch people at all.
What's, what's, uh, you and, uh, what's, uh, what's there?
Um, the second thing, I would, you need to, you look at the follow-up. You, you lost 25 people, which is, you're, following for separation, that's only.
Right.
That's what it's like.
Right. And, and so if you're right above that, we hire a little more.
Okay. That's, we, we, you know, you can just, we can, but, uh, we can get it, and, uh, we can. Yeah, and you're not going firing, like, going to that, but, but, you can, you can, you can change it.
So, uh, I can tell you that the fault that I knew hired and foster separated is going to be fired, which is because that's the story of the department.
But if it's in terms of the problem, fired, then it's going to have, have a, like, giving you, that's, uh, you know. If it's in terms of, probably, fire, then we're going to have, oh, giving, that's, you know, you know, you know, there's a position, like, to ask me, how many people work left, how many fire, so, you know, I can not, all of it, as a man, there's, a, 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 right?
And, first, this advanced point. Commendations, J I P S D representatives, of course, there are, um, correspondence on newspaper articles, um, you'll see in your packet that I composed the letter, and sent it to Senator Chip Kempson, informing him about the untiring passing of Commissioner Alan Loughlin, and we will wait to hear back from them. We'll see the editorial about people making, well, I can see that James Brown, and, and, making great strides with that. And, that would take us down to oral, uh, representation.
Do you have any more, if you'd like to speak in this long room, you would please stand up, state your name and address?
Martin. There were a couple ahead of me, I felt, uh, uh, you can hammer it, I'm, I'm, seven fifteen one, drive. Um. Sure. First off, I felt game with seven, I said on the website, I'm, I'm, why, and, and, some of the things, uh, working for, um, I mean, we, that was not on the website, it'd be great, so, if you have something to speak further, so we know. Um, but, here, I just got a P S P bill, after Phil and Michael, um, which everyone on the internet is saying, something I was looking into, um, it was for two hundred sixty nine dollars, highest P S P bill for the White River. Um, and so, I've got the wastewater committee meeting on fifth thirteen, uh, and, and, at a moment, had asked the staff for, um, information, not necessarily recommendations, but to make it all school judgment. Um, and, I'm here tonight to give some, that information, that staff about it, uh, that's what we're doing, about school. Um, first thing, the primary reason that I'm excited for non-referenced school judgment is to worry about, so, the current school, whether it's, um, actually more of the environment. Um, that's not the one with that, no, no, that's, maybe I'm wrong, but if I bring my school, my mind is okay then, um, staff is comfortable, and I can be at the school, um, not to get any clear, it's not wrong. It's one of the two, if you're not buying. Um, there's no reason to all bring a pool, there's water, climate, and all, really, it's nothing to do with that. Uh, no, we need a practice, and, why do I have to bring my school every year, and then, continue to get, you know, on the boat, every day, or, 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 maybe. Um, as for the water quality, there's really big warning, that, that made, um, and that it would constantly be tiny stormwater, well, every other inside that I've dealt with, has to do with that. So, some water, not, like, the, the, all the, all the towns, all the schools, so, are they all violation of the school water, or, no, no, it's not a chance, that, I mean, so, pools, we're not, we're, um, as we're, uh, another, I put the same water from the pool that I drink, I put the three volumes, told me that the average for them, four, three mother of the pool, between one and four parts, for the, one and one. So, the water, what we drink, is three point seven. So, we're bringing, just about the average worth of the pool. Um, so, the, you know, the suggestion from P S P that the pool water is more and more harmful for the environment than the water we drink, and, and, it's not good. Um, as for the, the comment, fellow comments by commissioner, that, you know, of course, we could have forced into for another way to get around it, just an avenue, water shop, that would be four hundred dollars, a well, be four and seven thousand dollars. The separate meter control, whatever, six hundred, everybody moves that, so by the time it's closed, P S P, that one is fixed. See what happened? Another commissioner said that in twenty five years, there was a test, and, our, right, after a pool, maybe not for the commission, but I'm sure people are called, there's no way you can know there's no one that ever called, because it's twenty five years, you want, you know. So, and then, one more comment, is, you know, in fact, if you're walking on, kind of, pools, you need to be on the P S P, which is, 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 where it's exactly the opposite, um, a new pool doesn't make someone lucky, uh, there's a, 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 that, 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 that. What would I should have said? Anybody else kind of? I make a motion, we go to the second session, um, to discuss personnel matters, and, and, sending them, like, certainly, it's not. Second amendment, second. No call, vote, please. Commissioner Brown, proud? Yes. Commissioner Clifford? Yes. Commissioner Grant? Yes. Commissioner Milton? Commissioner Holston? Yes. Commissioner Wood? Yes. I make my motion now, I make this, a motion to come out of the second session, no decisions were made in the second session. And now, I need a motion for a term. That's it. No call, vote, please. Commissioner, yes. Commissioner Clifford? Yes. Commissioner Grant? Yes. Commissioner Milton? Yes. Commissioner Holston? Yes. Commissioner Wood? Multi-ter, yeah, I think, is meeting for term.